Pat, can you please keep your computer on mute?
Okay. Call the meeting into order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special post-fall city council meeting to discuss masks. Clerk will note that all council members are present with Councilors Wolfe and Malloy joining us via Zoom. And Al and Joe, are you still with us? Good, thank you very much. Just so everyone knows, what we will do is this is a public meeting, but it is not a public hearing. There will be no public comment. We've received hundreds of emails. We've got everybody's information. We've read everybody's feelings and recommendations on the subject. And so what we'll ask is that no other, no comments be made from the gallery, that we adhere to proper decorum. And I just wanted to start out by saying I want to thank everybody for all the emails that we have received. And again, there have been hundreds, some for, some against. Couple of the reasons that people cited, probably the most common reasons for those who were against it was they felt it was a violation of the constitutional rights and that masks don't work. There's a case law going back to 1905 that deals with this issue. And there's a recent court case in Florida in July where I don't know if it's a county or the state had been sued for masks and the court ruled that that was not a violation of constitutional rights. As far as the constitutional rights, my thought is no one likes to be told what to do. That's not our intention. But I think back to the time when seatbelts were enacted into law and people said, you can't force me to wear seatbelts. There has been instances where decisions have been made, requirements have been made that people don't like. And I understand that. However, Warren, are we constitutionally able to issue mandate if council so chooses?
I'm unaware of anything that would make this unconstitutional in either the federal constitution or the Idaho state constitution. In fact, in Idaho state constitution specifically, cities are granted police authorities to adopt regulations to protect the public health. There's also state code that also gives cities the exact authority to take these types of actions in the issue when we have contagious diseases. So I'm not concerned about the constitutionality or violating some other provision of federal or state law.
Good. Thank you very much. One of the other, or some of the other concerns that we've had expressed to us is that the World Health Organization say masks don't work. So I've gone to the World Health Organization and they cite wearing masks, why they should be worn, and the fact that they do work. Then we hear that the CDC says masks don't work. CDC calls on Americans to wear masks to prevent COVID-19 spread and they tell who should wear. So in both of those organizations, they say that masks should be worn. Also here that there is no scientific proof, scientific studies that show the masks work. Here's a study from Kansas University Institute for Policy on Social Research that said masks do work. I'm not citing that to be argumentative. What I'm saying is no matter what your position is on this topic, you will find reports, you will find studies, you will find opinions that support that position, either pro or con. And so I think we all need to understand that whatever anybody thinks, you can find the details to support your position. It's incumbent on us now to decide what we feel is the best course of action to take. I don't want to tell anybody what to do. I don't like wearing masks. But I've got basically four main goals. Number one is to keep people safe. Number two, and I think this is critical, is to keep businesses open. I had an email from a gentleman that said, if you pass a mask mandate, you will kill my business. It was a restaurant. I responded, I says, if you have a mask mandate, people put a mask on to walk into the restaurant, they sit down at a table, they take their masks off. If you get up to use the restroom, you get up to leave, you put your mask on. How is that going to kill your business? So I want to keep businesses open. I want to keep churches open. I want to keep kids in school and I want to present, I want to help the hospital face the crisis that they are facing. I want to help them handle it. So again, my goal is not to tell anybody what to do, but I truly believe we're at the point that doing nothing is not an option. And so with that, what I would like to do is ask John Ness, CEO of Kootenay Health. He's got some information he's going to present.
Thank you. So good morning and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Really appreciate the opportunity to share information with you today. So in advance of this, we had prepared a 10-page, 28-question and answer document. Did you receive that? So in the interest of time, we're not going to go through that. The source of this is that our organization does depend on information from the World Health Organization, CDC, but we are actually on the front lines dealing with this every hour of every day and have been since late February. So our perspective is the perspective that we actually have COVID-19 patients in our facility. We're testing them. We have employees that have tested positive. So ours comes from the perspective of experience. And so today, what you're going to hear about is what we're experiencing here. So just to set the stage, in just a couple of minutes, I'll have Dr. Cabell join us up here and provide some background information. She's our chief physician executive and board-certified internal medicine physician and provides, has been providing COVID-19 incident command support all the way back eight months, starting eight months ago. And Jeremy Evans is our chief regional officer and he also has been involved in this every day. You're not going to find two people more knowledgeable of the situation than these two individuals. And so they've got some background information to share. So three key messages that we want to share with you today. And I just want to say we appreciate the complexity of this for elected officials. I'm actually sorry that it has to come down to the city level. In our state, there are regional health boards and our health board has both approved the masking mandate and then it rescinded the masking mandate. In some ways, I'm sorry that it actually comes to you as a council. So here are the three key messages. COVID-19 cases in Kootenay County are on the rise as we now enter a very challenging flu season. They are increasing at a much higher rate than our summer peak and we are increasingly concerned about the spread of COVID-19 in the community. Number two, Kootenay Health has been hovering near capacity for medical and surgical patients for several weeks. We have already been unable to accept dozens of patients we typically care for from other smaller communities in North Idaho. Without preventative actions, it is only a matter of time before this starts to significantly impact access to care for local residents. And number three, we're at a critical tipping point. Kootenay Health cannot manage this growing crisis by ourself. It will take the combined effort of our entire community. So we greatly appreciate your interest in learning more about this. Karen?
I'd also like to thank you for allowing us to come and speak. So again, internal medicine physician, I've been in practice for 20 years and been serving at Kootenay Health for almost the last four years. And wanted to go through some information regarding what our experience has been to date with COVID. So since COVID-19 was recognized in China on December 31st of 2019, and it quickly went across the globe. In February, late February, we activated our local incident command and that was largely based on what was happening in Kirkland, Washington with the nursing home that experienced significant COVID challenges and the concern over our relative proximity to that. March 4th, we got our drive-up testing center established. And it was March 16th when we had our first community positive, which was a traveler from out of area. And then just a week later, March 22nd, we had our first hospitalization. We were really fortunate to have very limited local transmission, March through June, with the various social practices, social distancing, masking, et cetera, that were in place. But then after the Fourth of July holiday, did start to see an uptick and had quite a spike in July and August. And it really did taper off by the end of August, beginning of September. But since that time, we're seeing record numbers again and Jeremy will be able to share some of those details. To date, as of Friday, we had had a total of 384 COVID-positive hospitalizations and 95 of those had required critical care. These are patients that are admitted because of COVID. They're not admitted for something else and then we find out they have COVID. We have excluded the obstetrical patients that end up being positive and deliver their babies at the hospital and have excluded patients that present for other conditions. And then as of Friday, to date, there had been 79 deaths reported by Panhandle Health District in the five northern counties and at Kootenay Health, we had experienced 30 deaths. So as we look at the characteristics of COVID-19, one of the issues of why it is so contagious is that up to 80% of patients have very mild symptoms or are completely asymptomatic and it's only 20% who become sicker. That's partly why it hasn't necessarily received the attention and the respect of other diseases where a significant portion of the individuals become ill. Nationwide, they're reporting 5 to 10% of people who are positive need to be admitted to the hospital and it's almost all for acute respiratory failure where they need more oxygen than their lungs are able to exchange. And 2 to 3% require critical care and somewhere around 1 to 2% of patients die. What we know about our numbers to date is that within the Kootenay Health testing and those patients admitted to us, just our data, 9.3% of patients who have tested positive have needed admission and 2.2% have required critical care. So why is COVID so contagious relative to other viruses? Why is it causing so much trouble? And this also helps explain why masks work. So COVID-19 is spread, just like the cold and the flu, through respiratory droplets that come out with coughing and sneezing. What we've also learned over the last several months is that it's also born in aerosols, which are little teeny tiny droplets that hang in the air for a period of time. And those can be released with just plain talking or singing or other just deep breathing. We know of a now famous report in the news of a choir in Washington that met, 60-plus individuals met and had a choir practice in an enclosed space and more than half of them became infected with COVID as a consequence of that. The first individual who had it had just very mild respiratory symptoms at the time of the choir practice. The next issue, probably more important than the prior, is that compared to the common cold or flu or other respiratory illnesses, the contagiousness really starts two days before any symptoms and it peaks on the day that symptoms start. And so individuals have, they don't know that they're sick yet, they don't know that they're carrying it, but they're starting to spread it. Most other coronaviruses peak in their contagiousness after symptoms start and they peak somewhere between two and seven days. And then last, what we know is that those 80% of individuals who are either asymptomatic or have mild symptoms, they're spreading it either before they have symptoms or without any symptoms at all and that accounts for as much as 45% of the infections. So the masking, everybody wearing masking, whether you have symptoms or not, is helping slow the spread. Before I get to some of the data, I just want to show this graphic. So the top left is no mask and this is just an individual who's speaking with backlighting to show the respiratory droplets that are emitted just from speaking. The top right panel shows a cloth mask of one layer and so even just a simple cloth mask reduces the number of particles in the air as a result of speaking. The next one is cloth mask, two layers, and then the bottom right is a surgical mask. And you can see that the volume and the distance of those respiratory droplets is decreased by having that just physical barrier in place. So that's the way masks work. They slow the spread by keeping people who are infected from spreading the respiratory droplets in their aerosols. It's not 100% as you can see, but it definitely reduces it. Additionally, there's emerging evidence that shows that masks also reduce the volume of virus particles inhaled. So if you're not the one infected, if you're protecting yourself, even a simple cloth mask has been shown that you'll have a less severe infection if you do in fact develop COVID. There have been several observational studies published, a couple of those were referenced already. But there were two hairstylists in Missouri who cared for 140 customers. Both of them had COVID, both of them wore masks and none of their customers developed COVID. The opposite of that would be the example of the Diamond Princess cruise line or the very, many of the naval ships where individuals were not yet wearing masks and hundreds of individuals on those ships became infected. We know that in states where masking mandates have been put in place, the modeling suggests that it reduces the increase in COVID infections by about 2% per day, which over time has a significant impact to flatten the curve. And just locally, our experience is that across the state line in Washington where there's masking mandate in place and there has been a masking mandate in place, the Spokane Regional Health District has a seven-day percent positive rate of 3.1%. So of all those who are tested over the course of seven days, 3.1% are positive. And here, the correlate of that in the Panhandle Health District is that we're at 13.6% positive over seven days. And last, I just wanted to show a comparison of COVID to the other pandemics and just the plain seasonal flu. With these various flu or coronavirus infections, the top SARS was also a coronavirus infection back from almost 20 years ago. It was very deadly. 20% of the individuals who contracted it did die, but it didn't make it very far around the globe and was identified early on for a couple of reasons. One, because it was just so deadly, you can't transmit a virus if you're dead and so it reduces that as well as individuals became the most infectious at two to seven days after they developed symptoms. So it was clear that somebody was sick and that they were able to be quarantined and isolated. The H1N1 swine flu of 2009 did result in a lot of infections in the U.S., but relatively few deaths compared to what we're seeing with this. Seasonal flu varies substantially from year to year as to what strain is circulating. But again, a lot less in terms of number of deaths than what we've seen thus far. The 1918 flu, we don't have a great estimate of how many actual infections there were in the U.S., but it is estimated that there were 675,000 deaths. And then COVID-19 to date, with the eight months that it has been circulating in the U.S., as of Friday, I think we've increased these numbers since then, but we're at almost 10 million infections with 235,000 deaths in the U.S. So that difference in contagiousness as well as, once it spreads to so many people, a certain percentage of those will require hospital care and some of those will die. Those are the key differences of why masking is so important for this pandemic versus ones of the past. So with that, I'll pass it over to Jeremy.
Jeremy, before you start, can we confirm that Al and Joe are still with us?
They are still there.
Still there? Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Thank you. Thanks Karen and John. I'm going to share just a few graphs and some numbers just to kind of give you a better picture of where the hospital stands from a capacity perspective, talk a little bit about our staff and our patients. What you're looking at right here is a graph that shows the number of patients who have tested positive since early March. We have tested over 48,000 patients at Kootenay Health. These are the ones that have come back positive. Our numbers at Kootenay Health total about 4,500 patients who have come back positive. The county is closer to 5,000, the district is about 6,300. You can see that we had a pretty good surge in July and August this past summer. And right now, we are certainly in a second surge and it's of larger proportion than the summer months. By the way, our positivity rate, and you'll hear this on a number of different occasions, and this graph showed that a rolling positivity for Kootenay Health patients was at 18.9%. That's pretty high in terms of the number of tests that were coming back positive.
Jeremy, could you please explain that? So the number of tests, people tested 18%?
Yeah. If there were 100 tests resulted yesterday, 18 or 19 of them would have come back positive. This graph shows the number of COVID patients that have been in the hospital again since the beginning of the pandemic. You can see the surge in the July and August months and again of late. The blue line represents the number of patients in any one given day who are in the hospital. So we peaked around 35 in the summer months and lately we have been up around 45, 46, 47 patients in the hospital. The gold line, the line below it, represents of those 40 patients or so, how many are receiving critical care level services? So there's a good number of those requiring critical care and again, you can see that number tick up. The little gray bar line is that positivity rate, the rolling seven-day positivity rate from the previous slide. And you can see in the past, when that positivity increases, we also see that increase in hospital admissions. Kootenay Health is licensed for 331 beds. 131 of those beds are designated for behavioral health, labor and delivery, postpartum, NICU. So very specialized patient populations, which we would not admit general medical, surgical, or COVID patients to. We often gauge our census by a yellow status, a red status, a green status. And we normally operate between 80 to 85% of those 200 beds that are available for medical surgical patients. This graph shows where we've been since October 1st. And you can see our medical surgical census, so that includes both COVID and non-COVID patients, has been increasing. And we've been operating in that red zone and into what we sometimes call our purple zone, which means we are at full capacity on a number of occasions. And we've been averaging around 92% for the last three weeks. So this is really where we have this capacity challenge. And it's not just the number of beds we have, it's the number of staff and resources we have to care for patients in those beds. We've been working on increasing our capacity by creating double occupancy rooms and adding more beds. But again, with that comes the need to add additional staff and resources. Likewise, throughout the region, we're seeing higher and higher incidence of COVID and higher and higher admissions for patients needing care for COVID-related illness. So the blue graph at the top or blue table shows the Spokane hospitals. And you can see amongst four of those large hospitals, there are 74 patients as of last Friday who are in those facilities receiving care. And we had 45 on that same day. The critical care capacity is also limited and on that day, there was only two beds available, critical care beds in Spokane. So we have had challenges transferring patients or deferring patients to Spokane. What's interesting, if you look a little closer, is the number, you know, 74 inpatients and they have 1,300 beds compared to 45 admissions and we have, call it 330 beds. There is a lower percentage of patients currently occupying beds in Spokane. And there could be a variety of reasons for that, but Washington does have a greater usage of masks in those areas. We also have been working very closely with the other North Idaho hospitals, the Critical Access Hospitals. Remember, these are smaller, they have 25 beds, maybe are set up and staffed to run 10 to 12 of those. And so on any given day, they may have one or two COVID patients in those facilities. But those facilities don't have the level of care in their critical care, or they don't have the critical care levels of service that we have at Kootenay. So we really become the critical care hub for all of North Idaho. We are at a point really now where we are managing our admissions and transfers on a case-by-case basis. Let's see, over the past five weeks or so, we have been unable to accept over 52 patients from some of these outlying communities because we were full. About a third of these were COVID-related patients, but two-thirds were other chest pain, cardiac, sepsis, abdominal bleeds, trauma, respiratory failure, stroke patients who were not, we were not able to accept. We've also had to defer nearly 30 surgical procedures over the past several weeks, again, including cardiac surgery, neurosurgery, abdominal surgery, orthopedic surgery, cancer surgeries. Now, most of these have been rescheduled and they were delayed, but any delay in care is really not ideal. So that is a big challenge for us. I wanted to talk a little bit about our staff. They have been amazing during this pandemic. We have over 3,500 employees and their safety and health has been one of our key priorities in our incident command. To date, we have had 250 of those employees test positive for COVID. Currently, we're tracking about 87 who are positive or being monitored and pending in their off work. What's interesting about our experience is that of those 250 employees, about 85% of those were sourced to a community transmission of COVID, meaning outside the walls of the hospital. About 10% were coworker to coworker, maybe in a break room, rubbing elbows during, you know, during the delivery of care. And less than 5% were from an actual patient who was positive and an exposure from a positive COVID patient in the workplace. So we believe our masking, our PPE, our hand washing, our infection control, our social distancing is working within the hospital. We are having staffing challenges. Again, you can see about 87 are currently off, being pending some COVID results. But we currently have over 380 open positions. We have seen additional absenteeism due to staff members calling in because of a child or a loved one or a family member who may be sick. And right now, there is a national shortage of highly qualified critical care and specialty nurses. We've approved over 60 positions for agency staff and we have been successful in filling about half of those. Showed you a lot of numbers, talked a lot about statistics. And what I wanted to do is bring it back home a little bit. Part of our mission calls for us to care for one patient at a time. That's that personal touch, that personal caring that we do. This is Joe. He was one of our COVID patients. And he gave us permission to share his photo. But there have been nearly 400 other individuals just like Joe in our hospital since the start of the pandemic. He could be a neighbor, a colleague, a coworker, a family member. And this is why we exist. We are your hospital. We are open 24/7, 365 days a year. We don't close. But we are at a point right now with the capacity challenges that on a case-by-case basis, we're determining where and how we can place our patients in our beds or how we can coordinate their care amongst the region. So anything we can all do together to lock arms, to slow the spread of COVID is of benefit and value to our community. And we certainly And we certainly appreciate you thinking through and considering this issue. And I think that's what we have for you today and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this point?
I do, I have one too.
Steve?
Jeremy, there's a perception that the hospital is making lots of money off of COVID. Could you maybe explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, and I think there's, in our Facts and Miss document, there's a response to that as well. You know, we don't get extra money for caring for COVID patients. Hospital reimbursement is complicated. We get paid on a DRG, a diagnostic-related group basis. If there are complications or comorbidities, there may be a little bit more reimbursement. But today, we are not covering the costs of testing. We're not covering the costs of extended length of stay that many of these COVID patients have, seven days plus. And so we are not making money, if you will, off of COVID patients.
Thank you. Shannon, could you get Al and Joe back on screen? Al, Joe, any questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Al.
I think it's better for Karen, who was up there a minute ago.
She's coming up.
Yes.
The information you presented about the efficiency and the effectiveness of masks, there's a lot of conflicting information. Association of physicians and surgeons, there's the two fairly well-known doctors, as I assume, that are saying that these are not effective. What would you say to those people or to the rest of the people who are saying, why are these people saying it's not effective and you're saying it is? Is it just an opinion or is it a fact?
The issue of masking has become quite politicized, as you know. And I would just answer that the preponderance of evidence and expert opinion is finding that masking is reducing the spread of COVID-19 in the U.S. and worldwide. And the preponderance of opinion is such. I can't speak for those limited individuals that have stated otherwise.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. Go ahead, Linda.
Yes, Karen. On October 29th, the CDC put out what they considered their recommendations for masks. And they stated that anyone two years or older should be wearing a mask. I'd like to, I'd like to hear your opinion of that.
So, not a pediatrician, however, individuals that are younger than two are not felt to be safe to wearing masks because of just the logistics of keeping it on their face. And little ones can't always protect their airway. And so above that, it is felt that it is safe and effective to wear a mask.
So you believe that a three-year-old should wear a mask?
In accordance with the guidelines and our pediatric colleagues in the area have felt that that was appropriate as well and have seen multiple instances of little ones wearing masks successfully.
If I could comment, Linda, on the World Health Organization. One of their releases stated that, in their opinion, this is a World Health Organization, children aged five years and under should not be required. So there is a difference of opinion between the two organizations. Steve?
I've got one last question. I've heard a lot that several fatalities have come from people that live in assisted living facilities. Do we have any stat that has the percentage of fatalities of people who come from assisted living facilities or people who just came and contracted COVID out in the public?
Yeah, I think we'd have to defer to our Panhandle Health District colleagues.
So we also have Laura Whalen, the Director of Panhandle Health District, and Jeff Lee, the Epidemiologist for Panhandle Health District, available for questions.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us. I don't have that number, Councilman. It is, certainly, we, there is a list at the state of, that is available by the public of those that have contracted the illness in long-term care facilities. As far as deaths go, I don't personally have that information.
Okay. But it does affect people that, it's not just affecting people coming from long-term care facilities, it's affecting everybody.
Certainly. There are deaths in 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, even in their 30s, 40s, and folks that aren't coming from long-term care. The majority of folks that, that are, that, people that have underlying conditions, and one of those underlying conditions is age, and so it's common sense, a lot of those are in long-term care facilities. And they have underlying conditions, diabetes, COPD, other things that are considered underlying conditions.
Okay, thank you.
I've got something for Laura.
Laura, one more?
Excuse me. Thanks for being here. Since what we're tasked with doing today is specifically pertaining to Post Falls, but all of the numbers are Cootney County, do you have numbers that would be specific to Post Falls?
We can drill down to those numbers, Councilwoman. We generally don't have the resources to do that, but we can do that as a special project. Our population centers are Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls, the Hayden area. So most of our population lives here, plays here, works here, and thus, a lot of cases coming from these zip codes.
Yeah, I understand that we, kind of like a patchwork quilt. But the reality is, is our decision, we're making for Post Falls, so we don't know. The communities are quite different. Hayden's quite different than Coeur d'Alene. And Post Falls is quite different from Rafterm and the other communities. So it, I just.
Certainly.
I've missed seeing that when it's all as a county.
Councilwoman, I can agree, we are different, are different communities, Post Falls, Hayden, Coeur d'Alene, but we all have the same behaviors. And our, the low-tech things that we can do to help preserve our hospital capacity are the same everywhere, the hand washing, the social distancing, the wearing of masks. Those are, you know, that's all we've got right now.
I know. And that's why it's a challenge when you have different entities that are making decisions for a specific geographic area. The people in Hayden and the people in Rafterm and the people in Coeur d'Alene did not elect me to represent them. So, yeah, I just, that's just, it's a piece of information that.
I'm having a hard time, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm having a hard time hearing what Carrie is saying.
Come on. Talk a little louder, Carrie, please.
I'll talk a little louder. Because the citizens of those communities did not elect us, the citizens of Post Falls did, so our responsibility is to make this decision for the citizens of Post Falls. And so I've just always thought all along that it would be of interest to know, even though it's a county-wide area for your purposes that you're looking at with the Panhandle Health District, now that it has come down to these individual communities, I, it's just a piece of information that I'd like to have, I wish I had, but I probably won't have it.
Well, Councilwoman, what I can tell you is, 80% of the known cases that we have are either asymptomatic, as I believe Dr. Cavill mentioned, or have mild ill, or 80, or don't know they have it, right? They're asymptomatic or a really mild illness. 20% of the folks that have it are going to have, they're going to know they're sick. They're going to have either respiratory systems, they may have, it may affect their GI tract, the loss of taste and smell, neurological symptoms. And of those 20%, 5% are going to need some help from Cootney Health. They're going to need some oxygen, they're going to need some IV fluids. And of those 5% of our Post Falls citizens, 1% to 2% may need critical care. I mean, that's, those are, this is such a novel virus, that those are, those are the facts that we have. And they're pretty consistent from what we're seeing, regardless of geographic area. We know the population centers are where most of the cases are coming from, because that's where the population is.
Well, thank you. It was just a wish.
Thanks, Laura.
Just wished I had it.
Laura, one more. You're muted, Al.
Question for Laura and then a comment on Carrie's question. First for Laura, I'd like to get some understanding about social distancing and the time in proximity with someone. I know it's established to be six feet, but you know, is there a real piece of this about how long you're within that six feet? I've heard anywhere from five to 15 minutes. So the two people passing each other on the street, who are just in proximity of that six feet for a few seconds, wouldn't necessarily have to wear a mask or wouldn't have a chance to infect. So first, I'd like to ask that question. But before I do, it's my understanding that this ordinance is not for the people of Post Falls, it's for the public space of Post Falls. So any person, whether they're from Washington, whether they're from Coeur d'Alene or Lewiston, if they're in a public space within Post Falls, that's when the ordinance would kick in. I'm just asking that question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Wolf, thank you for the question. The CDC guidance is showing us that a close contact is defined as someone within six feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. So as you suggested, if you're passing someone on the sidewalk, you're probably at very low risk unless that person happens to sneeze or cough while you're passing and that droplet gets into your mucous membranes. But the definition of a close contact is six feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour, cumulatively in a 24-hour period. And as far as the ordinance, I'm not, you're right, it would be if someone was in Post That would be my assumption, I haven't seen the proposed ordinance.
Thanks, Laura. Questions?
Captain McLean, whenever you want to invite him up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to first apologize for Chief Knight, he's unable to be here today, so he sent me as his spokesperson. As you are fully aware, we act at the pleasure of the council and the mayor. And whatever decision you make today, we will do our best to carry that out. I did want to bring a few issues forward that allow you to be aware of what we're going to be faced with if we do end up planning on passing this ordinance. We are at all-time low at officers per thousand. Currently, right now, we're at 1.29, approximate population of 40,000. Keep in mind that that's not all we're going to be dealing with. Because of our neighboring state, we do see a lot come and enjoy the benefits of the lesser restrictions in the state of Idaho. Spoke to a few of the facilities that manage banquets and they're up 25% with Washington individuals wanting to have weddings, banquets, trainings and so forth. So that is, that is an issue that we're going to be dealing with. We're concerned about, you know, potentially neighbors going upon neighbors because they're not wanting to wear masks as opposed to those who want to wear masks. So bottom line is that we are really going to be restricted on the ability to handle these complaints with what we're seeing right now, with an average of 40,000 complaints a year that we're currently right now handling. With that being said, we are going to have to prioritize what we go to. And with this potentially being an infraction fine, that has to happen in our presence. So when we get calls, come in, we'll prioritize them the best we can, but we may not always be there in time. And sometimes that will cause hostility towards, you know, the police department or the city. But again, we act at the pleasure of the council and we do our best to abide by whatever you guys choose to do at this time. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Lynn?
What impact, Greg, do you see on the communications center with the possible passing of this ordinance?
Well, if we see an increase with law enforcement requests to go and deal with mask issues, those come through our dispatch center, our 911 communications center, so they are going to be the first ones to get the call. So it's going to impact them, it's going to impact us, it's going to impact our records division, it pretty much will impact the entire police department.
Okay, thanks, Greg. I'd like to open it up for council discussion. What we're going to do is we're going to go by seat order, we're going to start with Carrie, and then we'll go to Al, and then Joe, work our way down. Carrie, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I have a statement here, I wrote it down, because that's what I do. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I feel like I know you all so much because I've been attending virtually most of the meetings that you all have been appearing at for months. "I raised my right hand and took an oath of office to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and to faithfully discharge the duties of counselor in the city of Post Falls to the best of my abilities. Nowhere does it bestow responsibility to make decisions regarding the personal health of individual citizens. Since this pandemic came into our lives, I've stayed home for the most part, avoided large gatherings and large stores, I've curtailed hugging and handshaking, I carry and use hand sanitizer, I take vitamins, I've worn a mask when required, and with my doctor's recommendation, I've recently gotten a flu shot. I've done these things not because I was mandated to do so, but because as a 68-year-old with a pre-existing health condition, who has been informed on the realities of this virus, it's in my best interest. I believe other vulnerable citizens are doing similarly. I have faith in and respect for my neighbors, the citizens of Post Falls, to make decisions regarding their personal health and that of their families. Just because as elected representatives of Post Falls, we can impose a mandate, doesn't mean that we should. It's in the best interest of the citizens of Post Falls for us not to presume that they're incapable of doing the same or that even healthy people pose a lethal risk to everyone they come in contact with. While the public receives daily reports of the numbers testing positive in Cootney County, the number of hospital beds available, and the message to wear masks, very little has been mentioned about the mental and emotional health of the general public who have endured much in the eight months that have passed. Mandating that the citizens of Post Falls wear a mask at all times in public places will not significantly change behavior. What it will do for sure is divide and polarize this community at a time when we need to continue to look out for each other. What it will do is add a burden to the Post Falls police officers who will be tasked with enforcing it. A well-earned reputation and culture of community relationships with our police department will likely suffer if they're put in this position. At a date uncertain, this virus will run its course and a vaccine will be developed. When we're fully able to return to our lives, I can only hope and pray that the very special community that I love and where I've lived for 35 years will be intact and recognizable. For these reasons, I do not support a mask ordinance for the citizens of Post Falls, and I say that respectfully and after much taking in of information, talking to people, and no small amount of prayer. So, thank you."
Thank you.
Well, a lot, very similar to a lot of our constituents, I think that I would I think that I would disagree with some of the things that Kerry said, but I would agree with a lot of things that Kerry said. Number one to me is what the mayor mentioned in his introduction, and that is reducing the capacity within the Cootney Health, keeping our businesses open, keeping our schools safe. Those are the three top priorities for me. At this time, as we just heard, we're at capacity. We're at that point where we're turning healthy people or sick people away from our hospital because we're at capacity. That to me is, is something that we've got to do, we've got to change. For me, I see this like a speeding ticket. We impose speed limits for people not only to keep themselves safe, but to keep other people within the community safe. And yes, if they're caught speeding, they get a ticket and they go to the judge or they want to do whatever they're going to do under a mandate. I don't think that this is an issue where we're asking people to wear a mask at all times. There's plenty of exceptions. If they're not healthy enough to wear a mask, there's an exception. They can get a letter from their doctor that says simply, "This person is, is exempt from wearing a mask." They can take that to the judge if they get a ticket and it'll be easily dismissed. I think that at the end of the day, we're asking our public or the people within our, our city, that when you cannot maintain a safe distance from others, to please respectfully wear a mask. And if that has to be done in the form of a more, an ordinance to make that more enforceable, then I do support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Joe?
So, I think like a lot of people, I've gotten a lot of fatigue on this topic and a lot of topics in general. Thing that's frustrating about today's modern age of media and social media and everything else is that it's gotten to the point where yeah, all news media for the most part is driven by who clicks on it. And so the headlines, the subheadlines, the talking heads, it's all it's on, aim to the extremes. If something isn't this way, then it has to be all the way, particularly from a
You froze up on us, Joe.
The CDC, to the media, to the talking head. What's that?
You froze up on us for a minute.
Okay. I think the, I think the way the, this pandemic's been handled, particularly from communications and media standpoint, from, from the WHO to the CDC, to the, to the media outlets, to talking heads, politicians all the way and down, has been criminal. You know, at, at first we were told, "It's not a big deal, don't worry about it, come outside, support your businesses," and it's told, "We're all going to die." At the Cambridge model that was showing 2 million-plus deaths in the United States, and that got revised down and it got revised down again. Of course, since then, I've learned that the initial models are always wrong, but the media didn't report that. Then, then it became political. You've got, you know, the left saying that this is the worst thing ever, and you got the right saying it's a hoax to get Trumps out, neither of which is true. I personally know or knew two people who have died of this. My, my wife's grandma being one of them, a coworker being another, not in this location, but down in Texas. I know personally a person who has long COVID, which unfortunately is rare, but 35-years-old, excellent shape. At first, I went to the hospital thinking he was having a heart attack. Four months later, still having heart issues due to COVID. It is real, it's not the flu, it's also not the next bubonic plague. It's not something we need to hole up in our bunkers and, and try to avoid either. The truth is usually someplace in the middle. And the fact that it's just gotten, it's done nothing but divide the country is really frustrating. The emails we've all gotten, we've seen the same kind of thing. There's a lot of fear and a lot of anger either way. You got one side that's, that's afraid that everybody's going to die because this is the next plague, and you got another side that's terrified of, of a global cabal that is trying to oppress people by having them wear masks. Personally, when I go into public, I wear a mask, especially if I can't stay away from people. I don't care if other, somebody else doesn't wear a mask as long as they stay away from me. I also carry a firearm, so I don't feel very oppressed even if I have a mask on. So I don't really see the whole oppressive side of this either. But trying to enforce a mask mandate, masks are just one thing. I mean, we need to keep our, keep our hands clean, we need to sanitize, take care of ourselves, eat right, exercise, do the best we can to protect ourselves and our loved ones. I have one surviving grandparent, he's 92-years-old. So my wife and I, you know, take a lot of precautions because we still want to visit him. That's why I'm zooming in right now. My wife just had surgery last week and so is at high risk. And plus, we don't have anybody to take care of the kids, so if you hear noise in the background, that's my kids playing in the other room. So there are things we can do, but not everybody can isolate themselves. About half the country has some kind of risk factor, either just being old or being overweight, diabetic, heart issues, asthma. I have asthma. So those that say that everybody that has a pre-existing condition just ought to quarantine, that's not really realistic either. People have to work. People have to go get groceries, they have to go do things. Flip side, like I said, mask is only one, one way. So if we, if we make a, a mask mandate, okay, so you got a mask over your nose and mouth, it's the right kind of mask, you're wearing it properly, great. What if it's pulled down over their nose? That becomes worthless. Is that a ticket? What if it's pulled down over their, their nose and mouth entirely? Is that a ticket? They have a mask on, technically. What if the numbers at the hospital continue to stay high? Then do we start posting police officers in the bathrooms to make sure people wash their hands? Yeah, there's, we can't enforce good behavior. And, and I think that wearing a mask, I, I've, I've gone to the CDC studies, there's one that's been misrepresented over and over again, that was cited in, I don't know, had to be three dozen emails, saying, saying that 70% of people that always wear masks tested positive, that's, I found the study in 90 minutes, read it, 90 seconds, sorry, and read it, that's not what it says. So go find it, seek it out. But even if masks are only 10% effective, it's slowing the spread of the virus, it's still 10% fewer COVID patients in the hospital. That's, it, it's an improvement, but I don't think enforcing or forcing people to do it is going to solve the problem. I think we should wear masks, we should socially distance, we should wash our hands, we should take care of ourselves, take care of our loved ones because we care about our community and we care about the people around us. I think enforcing a mandate is going to cause more problems than it solves. And I think the people of this community are adult enough and intelligent enough and caring enough to know that we can make a difference on our own because we care about our community. Also too, the hospital is a big deal and there's a lot of things that we can do to help ease the strain on the hospital. A good friend of mine is an administrator at a hospital in the Seattle area. And when this whole thing started back in March, I called him and asked how things were going. And he did say he never had so many people on ventilators in his career, but there were, there were no trauma patients. Other communicative, communicable diseases were down because people were at that time staying home. We can help the hospital too by, again, taking care of ourselves, not taking risks just to, just to stay in good health, whether it's, you know, if, if you've got to get on the top step of that ladder to get to that ranch, maybe rethink that. Because if you fall, you're going to be in the hospital instead of the bed. It's taken up. There's a lot of things we can do and we should be doing it because it's the right thing to do, not because there's a mandate to wear a mask. And for all those reasons, and I could ramble on for another five hours, just please take care of each other and I'm against the mandate.
Thank you, Joe. Steve?
Okay. I'm probably coming from a little bit different perspective on this because I'll be upfront and say I am employed by Cootney Health. I've been there since the beginning. I worked the south entrance during the spring months when this first came up, early winter and spring. Put a lot of people at that time in wheelchairs, all masked up and taking them down to the COVID testing site. Saw a lot of fear in people's face because they didn't know what they were facing, but I saw a lot of caring by our nurses who walked them through them. But a lot of these people, I was the first face they saw on that. Later on, I was able to go over to COVID testing and I did traffic control over there. And I saw that we had very few cars, not a whole lot going on in March and April, still testing, still considerable numbers in March and April. I was gone for a while, came back in July, June, our number skyrocketed. We were around the block with people, very dedicated nurses going out there, risking getting COVID, giving these tests to everybody. My job was to ask people to please put on a mask, which they were very polite and they did when they came up to testing. Same thing on emergency, when they'd come in, we'd put on a mask. I only had one person refuse me on all the time I was there. Now I'm working the north entrance. And this is a little bit different because now you're actually seeing the effect on families of the people who have COVID. I'm out there asking people to put masks on. I've only had two people turn me down before they come in. But I'm out there and the people are bringing up to me cell phones, they're bringing me up slippers, personal items for people in the COVID wing. There are people I know, a lot of my friends have had this, are up there, a lot of their children are bringing me, one friend said, "Can you take these jelly beans? Make sure they get them to my dad." I don't take them up to the COVID wing, but I mark them, make sure they get up there. So I'm seeing the human effect on this. It's just not numbers. It's not 80%, 6%. These are humans, these are people in our community. How many of them might not be there if we all wore a mask? If we wore a mask, maybe 50, 60 wouldn't be there. How many people might be alive now if we all wore a mask? If we can save one person, one person by wearing a mask, to me, it's worth it. I'd like to have somebody just come up and spend the day with me up there out front on that. Just, just see what it's like. It's, it's a different world. And I have so much respect for our healthcare individuals. People I've worked with in ED have contracted this disease. They have. And so it's, there's a human factor, we just can't keep going on stats on that, that what we do affects people, not just in Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, it affects everybody in our area, we're the inland empire. So I just feel that to protect our elderly, who this has hit real hard, anybody that graduated before 1975, you are extremely susceptible to this on that. And young people are getting it too. Young people getting it, my friends that have got it, they still have problems breathing, they still haven't got their taste back. It's things that have stayed with them. And I want to tell a little story. I stopped at a grocery store and I was wearing my mask, had my Cootney Health hat on. I come out and there's three young gentlemen and they didn't have their masks. And they walked by me, saw me wear my mask, and we don't, but they said, "Oh, Idaho has a mask mandate, we have to go back and get our masks." So if we can just get people wearing masks, maybe other people will start wearing them. And I think what Rod said, it's important to keep our schools open, our businesses open, because our numbers aren't going down. And we're close to a vaccine. If we could just wear a mask and protect people for the next 90 days to 100, maybe we can whip this. But we've got to start somewhere. And so I am for a mask mandate.
Thanks, Steve. Lynn?
Well, I kind of got to go back to taking care of yourself. I think that's where things have to start is the best solution is to protect yourself and other people. Working in healthcare for a number of years myself, I, I feel and I know that masks work. I've seen that. So I'm not opposed to asking people to wear masks. I am concerned probably more so now than ever about how do we get our kids back in school? I have not heard any answer to that question today other than we need to be addressing the mask factor. But we've got several emails from teachers in the schools that are concerned about wanting kids to get back into school, to be face-to-face learning instead of distant learning. So, yes, masks are going to help with that. And I, I think from the higher level education folks, that's probably a, a big factor in getting them back into the schools. I understand all of the, the impacts. I also would question from a law enforcement standpoint, those that have to enforce if we pass an ordinance, there are HIPAA rules that they have to deal with when it comes to asking people specific questions. So I'm wondering how we deal with that as far as a training perspective and the amount of time it takes to do those things. They all play a factor in, in where we go with this. And I think if we mandate it, it leaves less opportunity for discretion. So my opinion is I'd be in favor of a recommendation to wear a mask, but not necessarily an ordinance.
Thanks, Lynn. Linda?
Thank you for all the health professionals for coming today. I have also watched several meetings, so I've heard some of this information before. I, I also have done quite a bit of research myself and I'm going to read my, my opinion. I'm sure everyone knows the definition of the word pandemic. "A disease prevalent, prevalent over the whole country or the world. Over the past eight months, the information coming from the healthcare professionals have changed as they, as they have learned more, which of course is understandable. I've personally read a couple thousand reports online on the subject of COVID-19, watched several dozen videos online, and have had several conversations with a friend of mine who owns a company that makes vaccines in southern Idaho. I think if a person looks long enough, they can find documentation to support any view on the subject of masks. The latest reports I have read still state that face coverings may protect the people around me. However, another report I read a couple of days ago stated that face coverings that are not N95 masks that fit tightly around your face, droplets may escape therefore possibly infecting those close to us. All of this being said, I'm not a doctor or a scientist. I wear a mask everywhere I go, even if the mask is just going to protect the person next to me, that's good enough for me. I recently read a study that stated that 75% of Americans are wearing masks in public. I personally would like to send a thank you out to them and encourage them to keep wearing the mask in public. As for the remainder of the 25% of Americans who do not wear a mask for whatever reason, I would encourage you to start wearing one in public, even if it just might protect the person next to you. As for a local mandate, my feelings on this subject have nothing to do with people's rights. My opinion is to have close contact businesses, assemblies, weddings, funerals, family gatherings, and et cetera, that remain open and going on, many with no masks and little social distancing. I'm not sure how much sense it makes to have a mask mandate. Please don't understand, misunderstand me, I am not in favor of closing businesses down. I believe that closing businesses down does more damage than COVID itself. I know that we've all been watching the news and I, I, this is my personal feeling with a possible new administration coming down the line, I think that we are going to see different federal mandates on, on the way COVID is handled. I believe since it is a pandemic and it is a nationwide and worldwide disease, that this kind of how it is handled should be handled by the federal government. In all of the 21 years that I have been involved in city government in Post Falls and the 64 years I have lived here, I can say that I am very, very troubled about the fear, the resentment, the anger, and the divide in this community. I feel like a mandatory mask mandate that is criminalized is only going to make that divide deeper. I understand, and we have been told several times, that leadership roles, sometimes you have to make hard decisions. I understand that. I also would humbly state that sometimes you have to try to find a compromise. I, I am not in support of a mandatory mask mandate in the city of Post Falls for the reasons that I just stated. I would support a recommendation. I believe that the city of Post Falls should go along with Panhandle Health District Position Statement that was reconfirmed by the board on October 22nd of 2020. And that is And that is asking the community on a wide base, for wide-based masking, social distancing, repeated proper hand hygiene, use hand sanitizers, stay six feet away from people if you're not wearing a mask. And I would also, I also feel that it is our responsibility as a city council to protect our city employees. So though I'm not in favor of a citywide mask mandate for the cities, for the citizens, I am in favor of a mask mandate at all of the city-owned properties. Our city administrator shared with me the visitor and employee protocol that is in place right now. And I feel that it is in the best interest of the employees at the city of Post Falls that this become a resolution. That's where I, that's where I stand.
Well, it would seem to me that we're probably in about a 4-2 position on the mandate. People concur with that? Do we need, if that is the case, do we need a motion for anything?
So yeah, you'd need to take final action one way or the other, either to approve or reject the ordinance. A couple quick questions. I wanted to make sure that people understood that this is not a criminal citation. Infractions by their nature are noncriminal. So it's not something that lives on your record. It is, it is a, by definition, the state code is a noncriminal sanction. I think that was the main change. There was a couple of things I was going to mention if you wanted to move forward, but it looks like that's not the direction you're headed, so.
Okay. So we would, Al, go ahead.
I'm curious whether we could find some middle ground. I guess my main concern is that we're going to overtax the hospital. Would those in dissent of a, the ordinance consider the fact if we place the ordinance in effect only when the, the Panhandle Health District considers us in the red area?
We're already in the red, just so people are aware.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. But as soon as we go back to yellow, then the, then the man, the ordinance is no longer in effect. It's only when we're in red.
I'm seeing one no.
I'd try.
That just seems like it would be very confusing to the public. I don't know how you would get the word out there.
The only way we could do that, Linda, would be to ask the press to put it right on the front page of the paper and on their website that we are currently in a red situation, which means that masks are mandated in the city of Corlaine, in the city of Post Falls, but by only by proclamation in Hayden. I mean, they'd have to get that information out. You know, we're not, we don't really bounce back and forth between the colors. It seems like once we're in red, we're in it for a while. So I guess that's the other side of it is, is once we're, once we're away from that critical situation within our hospital, then we can relax things.
I would support almost anything at this point. So if Al's recommendation would be approved by anyone else, I would, I would go along with that on Al. I'd like to see us do something more than just recommend. I don't think recommending is going to do it. I don't think, you know, just recommending not texting while you're driving. You know, I think they had to put in some things, just that there had to be some type of penalty in order to enforce it. So, but I'm open for anything.
I would be willing to put that in the form of a, a motion to approve the ordinance to be effective only when the Panhandle Health District considers us in the red category.
I'll second it. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Thorson?
Nay.
Wilhelm?
Nay.
Borders?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion fails. Is there another motion to come forward?
Mayor, can I make a, can I make a motion for a recommendation?
I think you can. I think if you want to make amendments to the draft, that's great. Otherwise, we probably ought to have a motion on the, the ordinance itself and then, because that's the item that's on the agenda for today. If it's something you want us to bring back in the future, that's not an agendized item, we can bring that back.
Does that make sense, Linda?
No.
Just one comment, because I told Mayor and Council, when Shannon and I put the agenda together, that all options were available, so we listed that on the agenda that way.
So my understanding there was on the ordinance, we would need a motion to deny? Is that correct, Warren?
And other options. So yeah, we'd need to address the, the ordinance one way or the other, resolve that, and then if there are other options. I don't know that we can adopt something today. I'm not sure that we have enough specificity on our, or action item to give people fair notice what we're talking about.
We'd do it next week, though, couldn't we?
But we could put it, we could, it'll also give us a chance to draft whatever it is you're looking for.
Linda's.
I would reject the ordinance, President.
Joe's saying something.
Joe, did you say something?
I would move to reject the ordinance.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Nay.
Wolf?
Nay.
Motion passes. I want to weigh in here before we go to the next one. Masks aren't the cure-all. Masks aren't the solution. Masks have to be used with everything else. I've got good friends on both sides of this equation. I've got friends that tell me very respectfully, please vote no on a mask mandate. I've got friends that say, you know, you've got to make the tough decision, vote yes. It's really easy for them to say when they're sitting on the sidelines. Had this gone to a tiebreaker, just for the record, I would have been in favor. I think we need to do something, like, to help the businesses, the schools, the hospital. My biggest concern is that when this first started, Councilor Malloy drafted a letter and asked me to co-sign, which I did, to the governor, asking for local control. The governor called me up and said, you don't want to do this, and he wouldn't concur. So the governor took the lead on that. The governor's created the four stages that we're in. He has been, it has been requested of the governor to issue a mandate and to take this under advisement, and he has refused to do so. We are now in stage three. We rolled back from four to three. But in this portion, the stage three, certain things are allowed. If this continues, and if the cases continue to increase, I'm concerned that the governor's going to roll us back to stage two. Businesses are going to be shut down. I'm not criticizing, I'm not condemning anybody that's against a mask mandate, not at all, because I appreciate all your comments and I think everybody's heart's in the same place. We'd like people to wear masks, but it's whether or not they should be mandated. So again, I understand, I'm not being critical. But I think, think we run a real risk of being rolled back into stage two, which is going to have a significant financial impact on our businesses. It's going to hurt the economy as a whole, and I think it's going to continue to pose problems for the hospital. So again, just for the record, I, I would have been a tiebreaker in favor of, because as I said earlier, in my opinion, the option of doing nothing is not an option. So with that being said, if we need a motion to bring back a resolution at a future meeting, is it, would that be, thanks, Warren.
And just for the record, I'm not in favor of doing nothing either. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back a recommendation for the citizens of Post Falls or visitors to Post Falls while in the city limits to wear masks when they cannot social distance within six feet of another person. And I would also like some sort of a resolution with the employee and visitor protocol that the city has in place right now regarding city properties.
Before we go to a question, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, one, one second, Carrie, if you will. So we have a motion in a second. Warren, enough specificity for you?
I'm typing as quick as I can.
Okay. And so to Linda's point, Linda, you talked about the, the protocol for city. So you're okay, we'll have staff, we've got that, but have them draft the resolution and bring it back so we can review it?
Please.
Perfect. Carrie, question?
Because does, does the city need that or can the city administrator?
So currently, that is approved by the city administrator. So what Council Wilhelm, Council President Wilhelm is suggesting is that you guys would adopt that by resolution to have the full force of the council behind it also.
Oh, okay, yeah. But I, I was thinking that you were able to do that.
I, yes, and I haven't, I, that is currently has been distributed to all city employees.
And I, I believe that most people are respecting signs on doors if they say mask required, whether it's a government building. I had one.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Don't we have a sign say mask required?
Yes.
Yes. And I do believe that people are respecting.
The answer is no, though. We've got people in here that aren't wearing the mask. So, I mean, I'm okay with, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think if we're going to adopt it, then we should make sure that it is enforced.
That it is. Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if you needed that, if you needed more than what you already had, more authority than you already had. And if you do, then this will give it to you.
Good. You had another question or point, Carrie?
I did. I wanted to, because I know there's disappointment on how this turned out, but I, I received on late Saturday night, a message from a woman who is in healthcare and knew that we were, you know, all pondering and doing our due diligence. And she said, I'm, I'm feeling encouraged. I was out in Post Falls all morning, Trailhead Pavilion, which is where the craft fair was, the Jack, the Senior Center, Yolks Grocery Store, and Ace Hardware. I wore my mask everywhere, as did 90% of everyone I saw. I think folks are taking personal responsibility and really paying attention to the rising numbers and doing their part to stop the spread. I hope that we can trust adults and educate rather than instill fear. But that I found really encouraging, no matter where you are on the mandate, people are listening. Those of you who shared with us where, you know, the frontline information, people are listening. And so you have the, the people that you're noticing because they're loud on either side, but the people that is, most of the people that we know and see, those people are listening. You know, the numbers are rising and they're scary and we all want our life back. And I think that you will see without this mandate that people will step up more than they would have with a mandate. And that's just my, my observation, that I, I do think that we have some hope that things can change for the better.
Steve?
So I'm going to just tell one last thing. First of all, I want to thank the people that do wear masks, that do have empathy to their neighbors and their fellow citizens. But this year, when I was working at COVID testing, I had two gentlemen that got lost. If you've been up on Ironwood, there's Ironwood Place, there's Ironwood Court, there's Ironwood Circle, there's Ironwood Everything. So they came by and they were looking for a place over on Ironwood Circle. So I took some time, talked to them for a while, and they asked me what was going on. I explained to them. And so I talked to them for probably five minutes and they weren't wearing masks in their car, but when they drove off, they want, they said, hey, I just want to let you know, you're a coward for wearing this mask. So I want to let people know, if you wear a mask, you're not a coward. You're a patriot and you're very brave, because you're going to take a bad time too. I got called that in front of the hospital. And I get called a few other names in front of the hospital when I ask people to put on a mask. But you are very brave to wear a mask, and I wish our citizens would, because people that wear masks aren't cowards.
Linda, I want to go back to, please understand that when I said doing nothing's not an option, that was not directed at council. The fact that there's a resolution out there, I think is much better than letting it die or issuing a proclamation or whatever. So I appreciate your, your motion on that. So I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I, I personally cannot mask up a three-year-old.
No, no. But I want to make sure you understood where I was coming from with that.
Yeah.
It said mask up a three-year-old.
In the resolution, to Steve's point, we all see everyone that's sitting up here and those up there on the wall. We all look at life through different filters and different lenses. And one of the things that I did not mention in my written things, and that, that only a few people know, because quite frankly, I'm not out and about, so people haven't known, but I have extreme anxiety. I am working with it with a therapist that has to do with having my nose and mouth covered. And I am here to tell you, it is very real. It feels sometimes like a heart attack is coming on. So I'm seeing things through this lens. Then you have people like my friend Stephen, we're the same age. So we both, you know, have to be cautious, who is being brow-beaten by people. I, I wish we could put something in the resolution that just says, zip it. I have not, can we put zip it in there? But I, I have not experienced what you just experienced. And because I go so few places and because I can wear a mask, even if it's not the right way for brief moments in time, I've not had anybody harass me for not wearing a mask. But that is what is, is really preventing, I think, that, that sense of community that we all need to have. So it is not your business to tell my friend Steve, to say things to my friend Steve for not wearing a mask, nor is it your business to tell someone who's not wearing a mask. I may or may not, I'm going to call my therapist today and ask if she can write a letter and say, yes, we're working on it. But I hope it doesn't have to come to that ever for me or anyone else, that we've got to have in our pocket something that says, this is hard for me.
Now, we're not requiring that, so. Anything else, any other comments?
Just the Pfizer came out today with COVID-19 vaccine information, that it is in the final trials in their company, 90% effective, that by the end of December, they feel like they will have 50 million doses out for healthcare workers in the United States, spring 2021, possibly for the general public. And my friend who owns a vaccine company in southern Idaho told me, and I shared that with Shelley the other day, that six companies had vaccines in the pipeline that they felt that were going to be approved in, before the second quarter of 2021.
Yeah, that challenges the test results. Hopefully, hopefully that all goes well. Anything else we could, or Al?
So I'm a little confused. Do we have a resolution that's been, a motion in a second? And if there is, could you explain a little bit more about what that is?
We did, do we did vote on that?
There was a motion to direct staff to bring back a recommendation slash proclamation to wear a mask in city limits when you can't socially distance, and a resolution that visitors coming to city facilities must wear a mask was my, my shorthand of what Linda said.
Linda, is that okay?
Okay.
To, to city property. Yeah.
Okay. Is that all right, Al?
Yes. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Well, just to clarify for everybody watching, that a, a yes vote on this one is to bring back something that we can vote on next week.
Correct.
It's not necessarily a yes or no to whatever we may be voting on.
Just bring back resolution. Nothing else to discuss? Next motion is?
No, they, they need to vote on that motion.
I'm sorry, what? That's what I thought we had voted on. I apologize. It's a special meeting, it's not my normal hour here. So we've got the motion and we had a second. You're right, Carrie, you seconded, and then I start asking questions. I apologize. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, and thank you for keeping me straight on that. I appreciate it. One second. Is there anything further to come before the council?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Ness would like to make one comment. Can we let him do that?
So...
Does it have to be on record, could we close the meeting and then let him do it?
So if you're going to do it, I would, I think that's fine. We'd have to said essentially that there would be no public comment, so.
So let him?
At your discretion.
Want, want to let Mr. Ness speak?
Yeah, of course.
He's already spoke once.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's kind of on our agenda.
You can call a rebuttal.
So first of all, thank you very much for considering this complex issue. We do understand. We do understand at Kootenay Health how difficult this is in a local community environment, and some of the challenges associated with it. So we certainly respect and understand your decision and your approach to this. I just want to share one story with you, because I think the situation is going to get worse. I wish I didn't have to say that. So in the United States, if you ask the question, how many community-owned hospitals of our size are left? The answer is 32. There are only 32 hospitals our size that are community-owned in the entire country. And so I had a nurse approach me in the community and say, you know, for community-owned, why in this time of greatest need does the community not support us? We're there 24/7, 365 days a year, providing services. But when we need assistance, the governor has decided not to step in with a masking mandate, the health board rescinded the masking mandate, and now Hayden and Post Falls have. So I'm hard-pressed to answer that question. And it is a dilemma for us at Kootenay Health. I will say that our medical staff and our nurses are extraordinary. Regardless of any decision, we are going to be there every hour of every day, no matter what, and we're going to wear a mask. And six months from now, hopefully there's a vaccine, we will get through this, but it's a, it's a real dilemma for us in leadership to get our physicians and our staff to support this going forward when we don't have community support. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Next motion.
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.